We'll call the meeting order, please join me in the fight, Slu.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here, Sowers, Sill, Tom Law, Kassowski, Koir.
Here.
And Jackson Long.
Okay, we don't have to offer Jack a excuse.
No, we don't.
We should probably excuse Steve.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Sowers.
A second.
Moved in second that Mr. Sowers be excused, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. This moment, we will have a moment of silence for our...
Merely departed?
Recently departed Jack Williams, who sat next to today. Great, thank you.
He's on the radio up there talking.
Eat not dogs.
Eat not dogs.
Approval of this evening's agenda, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
Second.
Motion's on the table that the agenda be approved as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion carries there. Also, public comment. Don't see any. We have no reason for a public hearing this evening, I don't believe. Correspondents? We have one from Leslie Ditzworth, expressing interest in Jack's seat at this table. I can do that right here, but I'll do it under new business, so remind me. Everybody got a copy of that?
No.
No? Somebody want to read?
Sure.
Do you need to amend the agenda for that?
Uh, no, it's under new business. Well, maybe, uh, something that matters.
Okay, what did that say?
People. Minutes of the previous meeting, I've started them around. There they are.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
Minutes, minutes.
Okay.
Minutes of the previous meeting, a motion on the table to approve those as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Reports. The superintendents are not in attendance tonight.
But I have this report.
Right.
Okay, so, Scott said, red meters, all are working after winter. Weight restrictions were lifted from town streets on the first of April. The park has been de-winterized, bathrooms in good order, all the planning was been picked up and Plankholme said went over and did that. Um, the clear panels were all taken, they're not put up, they're out in the shop right now. And they're not going to be put up unless we get a park hose, which of course, we haven't received any... Anybody called or any applications for a park hose, so we just probably won't be able to.
Move your trailer.
Just taking it as a kind of thing.
No, we will.
HLA went over the list station upgrades, bids will be accepted, HLA advertised in the papers, so bids will be accepted until May 17th, and then the bid opening will be sent after that. Sewer manhole inspections have been completed, one with debris, and it was cleaned out, and then Proback is going to be here. They were supposed to be here two weeks ago, but they didn't make it over, so they'll be over and start counting the sewers again. DOH notified the town that they'll be conducting a sanitary survey this summer, and it's mandatory that a person from the council, the governing body, has to be there.
See if the screens are over the drains and the pump house and all that kind of stuff.
Yep, and someone has to be there by law.
When is that?
The summer.
Just the summer?
Yeah.
But you don't have a date or time?
Not yet.
They can do that.
No, they'll let, DOH will let.
I can do it, but I got conditions, no Thursdays.
Is that golf?
Yes.
Priorities.
The, oh, the park alleys still need to be vacated.
One in front of the...
There's three. Aaron never did follow through with that one, he was supposed to do that.
No, vacated Aaron.
Yeah, older John.
Okay.
So, this is the part right here, okay? This one, this one, and this one, they all need to be vacated.
Okay, so who owns these adjoining lots of the town?
We, yeah.
Okay, all right. Can I get a copy of this and then I'll go ahead and go on it?
Scott probably just have that one, I'll check with them.
Yeah.
He said, to recap, power or communication companies can use any right-of-way in the town in order to keep them out of the park so that they don't try and go through with their stuff. The existing alleyways need to be vacated.
There's power, there's power that goes through there now, I think.
I think so, and we don't want, yes.
But in a vacation, you can reserve easements for the utilities and that, so you just do that.
So that's kind of what he's wanting to do, and then he said, 618 Cleveland, Patricia Garris, has dumped a load of dirt outside her fence in the right-of-way, I feel she will only ignore anything I say. So if the council wants to have the dirt removed, then we really just send a letter and tell her she needs to move that out of there. Or the town can call it away.
How about we move it into her yard, anyway?
How about, that's kind of where I thought maybe I should have been, but anyway. That's...
That's, uh, under the definitions of nuisance.
Yeah.
That, it's, so, if you want to send me her... If you want to send me her contact information, I'll include her in the list of letters.
Once you decide what you want, if you want to remove it, I'll scoop it up and move it.
Well, I think we've got to build your process.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, let's, let's...
That could be a fun one.
We'll just do that, correct. And that's it, for Scott.
Okay. All right. Dora, move it in.
The only thing I have is, the annual report was completed and submitted to the state auditor's office, March 31st, so it's done.
Record time.
Yes.
They've, uh, they have blessed it yet? Probably not.
They received it, I don't know if they blessed it, but they've received it, so that's good.
Good work, great. Fire chief is not here.
Who's the fire chief?
Billy Madsen.
Billy Madsen.
No.
We, we interviewed two people.
Yeah.
Okay, so we haven't, we didn't have the meeting last time.
Okay.
So we got to bring them to the council tonight, and then they will move.
So you haven't chose, decided who goes out of those two, right?
No, because we have to, we have to give them to the council first.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Yeah. Would you like them right now? The names?
So then we have to vote on...
No, we don't have to vote.
We don't have to vote, you're just...
No, we just, me and Gary interviewed them, and they're both qualified.
So isn't it, do the guys know to vote who they want?
They will, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, because they know both candidates.
Okay, and then you'll bring that person who wins to the council?
Yes, yes, yes. Or the person who wins can bring himself to the council.
Okay, sounds good. Preferably, either way, I don't care.
We have Nate Henderson.
Yep.
And then we have Adam Yabara, and they're both more than qualified.
Any relation?
Uh, no, I ask you. Both.
Yeah, they're both very knowledgeable.
Yeah, and you guys know Nate.
Yeah. All right, good, that's him, Karen, thank you. Which brings us to the police, which would be the sheriff's department.
Kind of awkward sitting.
Name's Ben Koch here with the sheriff's office, obviously I'm a chief deputy, so all things patrol, search and rescue, detectives, cop complaints, insults, comments, I'm the person to get a hold of and help with those. I provided a little breakdown of what we've been doing out here since we started with our contract. I note, you know, the one arrest was from a domestic call. I can tell you that the four burglary calls that are on there were dispatched as burglary calls, but they weren't really burglary calls, so... If you have any questions about what's going on, it should be noted that that's just till 4/13, so last week is when I pulled those numbers. It's obviously been a couple of days, but, you know, we're here to help, and call us for whatever you need, and I can answer any questions if you guys have any.
Right. And I do see him driving around.
I have seen more county cars in and around South Clayown and the upper county than I've seen for a long time.
Yeah. Good, I'm glad to hear it.
Almost everywhere I go, I don't stay home a lot. I'll run into a sheriff's car.
It's just what we wanted, this is my...
I was just gonna say, I got just one question. Can you guys work like maybe just a little bit of speed?
Sure.
Like, South Clayown way, when the moms head to school in the morning with their kids.
Absolutely.
They're just flying down to their, get their kid to school.
Yeah.
But they come off of Madison and then boom, down.
Not all Karens.
About what time, about what time?
They usually do between 7:30, 7:00, 7:30, and 8:00, 8:00 o'clock, 8:15 probably.
All right.
You ever seen the start of the Indy 500?
Yeah. A little crazier. This is my partner in crime, Darren.
Those that don't know me, Darren Igaschama with the sheriff's office, I do the admin side of it, the civil side, and I also do emergency management, so you give me as your emergency management, if you would like. Next year, we have a rewrite on our hazard mitigation, our county-wide hazard mitigation. You guys can get on it, and I'll speak to the mayor if, if he wants me to put that on the agenda next year to get it on, there's a process for it, that needs to be voted in. What that allows for, if, if we have a designated emergency for FMAG, which is Fire Mitigation Assistance Grant, so like Jolly Mountain or anything, just because you weren't affected, if it does meet FMAG or public assistance, we automatically get hazard mitigation grant monies afterwards automatically. And you do not have to be affected by it to apply for it, you just have to be a part of the hazard mitigation program and by signing off on that. So Clayown, Roslyn have signed off on it, Ellensburg has signed off, you guys have not, and Kititas has not, so I'll, I'll talk to Kititas about signing on. We do all the work, we contracted it out, so they did a great project for us. With that is also hazard, or debris mitigation, that has to be blessed, that plan has to be blessed by FEMA in order for you to receive any public assistance money for debris removal. So if we have a huge storm that knocked down all these trees, and if, if they're on the right-of-way, you guys are on the hook for it. With this, uh, we could seek public, um, PA money, public assistance money, and then they would reimburse 75% of that. So snow removal, like we told mayor, is not reimbursable. We just had the discussion with...
Throw that one out there.
...last Tuesday, it is not.
Even though it does, we'll already storm sure.
Right, but, but flooding is, so we try to retro it, so when we do clean, we told the mayor, we had a meeting with the mayor saying, hey, make sure that you're taking photographs of your, your storm drains and stuff, so if we do flood, we can retro it and go back to this was mitigation to, to try to get that flood under control. We did not flood luckily, uh, this, this year, so, which is, which was a shocker, we were prepared for floods. Uh, the other thing, and I don't know if you guys adopted the CEMP, so you, we have the, the county emergency management plan. Every municipality is supposed to have that, or get it blessed by the state. I write the CEMP, it's not due for rewrite in two more years, but I write it for the county and municipality, so I'll say, with approval of the board of county commissioners and/or the city council. So what Clayown usually does, what Ellensburg just does, is get a copy of mine, and they, so I have to submit it to the state. It gets blessed, I get a nice letter that we're in compliance with it, um, and then most municipalities, since I write it that way, have adopted it. So Kititas adopted the same, same thing. So we, we do that, just because we play well in the sandbox.
We do that.
Yeah, so I'll get a copy of that to you guys, and then all you guys is take Kititas County off of it, put City of South Clayown on it, and then you're in complaints. You submit it, and then you're in complaints, so.
We'll do the other thing.
Yeah, hazard mitigation, I'll, I'll make sure I'll get with you guys when we do action on it, because then we'll draft it up, and then you're just included in the appendix on that, as a signee of that, and then that way you're entitled to some, some monies, because like, we can put a generator here for your firefighters or whatever. We did it District 1 Advantage, because it's under county, we did it at District 6, buy the generator. Roslyn wants a generator, so next hazard mitigation, if we build those projects, I'll apply for those, and we usually get that, those small ticket items, so.
We'd love to be a part of that.
Yeah, yeah, and then, I mean, it's, and that's not a match, so hazard mitigation, they pay it. Uh, the PA stuff, public assistance, 75%, and with a 25% match, sometimes the state kicks in 12.5 or half of that 25%, so you'd have to come up with 12.5%. Since, you know, you contracted with us, sheriff says I can help with emergency management, so if we get volunteers or anything, that's how you, you take their hours, and then that's your match for those funds. So a lot of our, our stuff that we do with PA, we pay $0 out of that, because we keep track of volunteer, so.
Great.
Questions or comments?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Also, May 11th, we have a, um, a tabletop exercise, it's, it's upper county centric, it's not going to affect South Clayown, but it will affect 903, so we're going to burn down either Ronald or Roslyn and cut off 903. Uh, so it's a tabletop, we have a professional coming in to set out that tabletop for us. We don't know where it's going to be, Plan B is Centennial, Plan A is Encatia, so we're trying to get a venue set. But once I get that venue set, I'll make sure that all mayors and city councils are invited to it. It's a great way to see how we would do an evac, a grand evac on it, so if we had a fire like on West Side Road, it was coming this way, how we would evac, and what we can and can't do with evac, so. But all electors are, are invited to that, and I know my board will be there, I know Mayor McGowan will be there, but, so maybe then.
Thank you.
Right, questions?
Anything we can do to help? If you fellows do what you do, we can certainly do.
I think for both of us, it's just all about the communication, so don't hesitate, don't get a hold of us if there's a question or issue. We'd rather, rather address it earlier than later.
Reciprocity is important.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, yeah, absolutely, Ben said, and anything that you, you have questions on, hey, how do we do this, how do we get grant funding, you'll let me know.
Great.
So, and it's nice to be, if you tag on to somebody else, it even looks better. So if, like I just had a meeting with the, with Clayown and Roslyn, I said, you know, if you pull together, it looks better on paper when you're submitting it to FEMA for, for grants. So if it's a regional thing, or an area thing, so.
Clayown, Roslyn.
Both together.
Right. All right, thanks for having me.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Have a good evening.
Be safe.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
That was weird.
That's a lot of good information there.
Yeah.
Cops talking to us?
So I've been communicating with Talia at BHC Consultants on the Gateway Zone. She provided me with copies of all the documents, I took a look at them, you know, they're running a meeting next week here.
Thursday.
Thursday this week here, for public comment, they've got SEPA underway. As she says, they're on track to, um, probably present this for adoption at the, um, May 3rd council meeting, is that right? Um, she, I'm going to talk to her because she indicates, um, that, you know, it could be problematic if the moratorium was lifted on May 4th, so she's worried about, you know, getting passed, that somebody applies and somebody appeals, and, uh, so I'm going to talk to her about that, um, and we'll have an answer for you. I'll probably do an answer, try to do an answer in writing to you guys, just an email, kind of giving you a recommended course of action, and then it may be that on the first council meeting, when you adopt that, we also extend the moratorium through the appeal period. So, uh, that's, but other than that, it looks like it's, um, moving along. The other, I'll come back to, oh, never mind, you got, the rest of the two, the other two items I had are on the agenda, so I'll address those when you get to them. Any questions for me?
At this time. So cluster development, as opposed to definitive lot size? Or approximate, which goes better in any zone? Or is that a function of case by case?
That's kind of case by case, I mean, I haven't, you know, I haven't, I'll admit, I have not got far enough into really your zoning code to sort out what the options are, I know that they're addressing this specifically to deal with one piece of property owned by one person, which is a little problematic, but, um, that, you know, the, and I can look at the ordinance, and we can talk to Talia and the folks over there about whether you want to consider a cluster type arrangement, or, or maybe even more along the lines of planned unit development type array, uh, code.
We're going to wind up with all that infrastructure, so part and parcel of that is getting it how we want it.
Right. So I'll look at that, okay, that's a nice to do list.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Jeff? Nope. I have nothing to pass along. Anybody on the council got a report? I'm hearing. All right, we'll move on to claims. Somebody's going to have to.
I moved that claims against the town, be allowed, checks drawn on the town treasury for the same.
Second.
Jack could be proud.
Good man, Gary.
Moved in second that claims be allowed and checks drawn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to unfinished business, number one is violation notice for Jason Keating.
Yeah, that's mine, so, um, I've looked at the process and, and I, I wanted to kind of gather some evidence, and so I, um, because I kind of assume we're going to have to take the guy to court. So I came early tonight and found his house and stopped, got out of my car and took pictures. By the time I was back in my car, he was coming out of his driveway, and I didn't stop to chat, but clearly it's a dump, whatever you want to call it, got to be dealt with, so we'll plan like we got to go to the mat with the guy and get it cleaned up.
Okay, great.
I don't see where you have a choice, that's, that's bad.
No.
That's bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, good, thank you. Where's our heat pump?
Okay, I called today, um, well, he's got part of it.
Really?
But not the heat pump. He's got some parts, the heat pump hasn't come, he was going to call me today if it came today. Could be on the truck somewhere, he doesn't know where, so when he gets it, then he'll let me know, and then we can plan when to be able to install, because we can't take the furnace out until we have the heat pump, because we won't heat.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, it's almost summertime, we can get ahead of the game.
Yeah, so we'll be ready for that, that's my, as well be.
I've been waiting for a cooktop for a year and a half.
Right, so, yeah, so, we're there.
Okay, thanks, any other unfinished business? Moving on to new business, short-term rentals, we were, we were kind of kicking around, getting rid of that whole shadile. Prohibiting, if you will, short-term rental in South Clayown town limits.
Been a pain in the butt since we've been dealing with.
Yeah, and we don't have many of them.
Yeah.
So...
Do we even have any legit ones? Other than, yeah, that's what I thought.
I contacted her today on Madison, and asked her, I said, you guys have the paperwork yet? Because they were supposed to submit it, and she said that they're no longer, they're living there full-time now, she said, so we're not going to do that anymore.
Cool.
Um, so they're not going to do the short-term rental, and so I just printed that email and put it with her application that they aren't going to do it anymore.
Smart, so that guy over here.
I don't know what's going on there, he says, he told me that it's for, what's the max, 30 days on a short-term rental? So he said, well, if I do it for 32 days, then I don't have to have a short-term rent, you know, it's not a short-term rental.
Well, he has to do is get online and go to...
I looked, tried finding today, oh, I looked at the RBO and I looked at...
Yeah, Airbnb, it's still on there, it has the calendar and everything, you can look at the schedule.
Yeah, he knows, yeah.
Do you want me to add that to my...
It's pretty full over there, bud.
Do we, do we get to tack a notice on the front door? Do we, we send the person a letter and say, you're not going to continue to do this?
Well, let's, um, let me look at your code to see what it says about it, uh, and then, you know, it's kind of an evolving issue across the country.
Yeah.
So why...
Take a look at it.
Sorry to mean that.
No, that's fine.
I was going to say, so why are we even bothering with that if we're possibly going to get rid of it all in all?
Good question.
We no longer allow. It would not be where we're going to be at?
It sounds like it, I just got to figure out how to get you there in a defensible way.
Let's, let's get us there, I think in, is, is there consensus around the table?
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Let's, let's get us there, and then if it rises up again, we can deal with it later. Because this is...
I agree.
Because basically if we, if we do that and get rid of it, then we're going to be dealing with him on a, a different level. No sense to deal with him on this level and then having to deal with him on that level if we decide to do that.
Okay.
Because obviously he doesn't care, I mean, he's been contacted a dozen times.
He wants to be a good neighbor.
Another thing for your list.
I got it.
Okay.
Well, I want to be a good neighbor too, but it doesn't mean it happens.
One thing that Scott asked, we didn't bring up, um, is that out in front of the place at 5, what, 516, 515 Dunn Dunn Madison, that they were emptying their, um, sump pump into the sewer.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Sump pump from their basement?
Mm-hmm, and they can't, they can't do that.
We can't get in there though, to, to nail that down, we can't go inspect that.
But the building official had seen it in the basement, and when it's raining really hard and stuff, Scott lifts the manhole, and that manhole is right where they're, um, he put it right where they're...
We put that specifically in that spot.
And it just pours out of there. So, he wants to know what, what steps now can we take besides blocking that off and telling them, hey, you start shooting water, hell, it's going to come back in your basin.
Spreading property and public people. The last word we have, we can't, or couldn't...
Go inside.
Go inside and look to see if it was...
But if you turn it on to public, uh, into the public system, it's a question of what you can discharge from your property into the public system. And I'll just have to...
Got another one for you.
Let me flip the page over and put it under seven.
Some pumps are not something that it's legal to put in.
Right.
Well, if he offers to put it on the list.
Yeah.
He does.
And he saw them with the manhole the other day, and they saw the water running out, and so Scott checked it today, and it's not running out.
Just like, it's not a monastery, just on Facebook and in the paper. Okay.
Anyway, yeah, he was wondering about that.
I don't know whether I would take a, a officer of the law to accompany you doing that, you need a...
Somebody to...
It would be nice.
I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Somebody to witness it.
You know, it's really nice when somebody tells me that you can count on.
It's kind of long.
I'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say, how many do you have on your list? Because we still have.
Okay, short-term adoption ordinance number six twenty. I assume that everybody read this in its entirety because staff has sent it to us all with instructions. It looks good to me.
And it's, it's just fixing what we adopted before and had to repeal because they didn't get all the correct information.
Did BHC do that again?
Yeah, it was one, one of their yells did it, but she didn't get all of it.
Is this somewhere else in the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And this goes hand in glove with what we're doing over there in that gateway thing also.
There's some shoreline stuff, so anyway, I'm going to give you that one.
Alright, I'm going to ask the question then.
I move we adopt town of South Clayone ordinance six two zero dealing with shoreline management.
I'll second that.
Moved in second and that shoreline master plan adoption ordinance number six twenty would be adopted. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those would be opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Oops, sorry. So we won't hear anything more about this for a while?
I don't know what you guys will hear about it.
Yeah, the door won't. Yeah, you won't.
I think we've been dealing with it ever since I got on the council.
You got a counting on the clock right here on the ridge.
Twenty-three more working days.
Alright, break room bathroom addition. We got plans? That's moving forward. As soon as we can get the furnace out of there, the quicker we can get it done.
We got bids?
Oh, no.
Okay.
That's the thing. What do you want to do? I mean, are we supposed to go out to bid now? What, and who's, are we going to get a?
Oh, that's more than, a lot more.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Yeah.
And.
I see with the price of lumber.
Oh, Jesus.
You know, that'll have to be, have to put it in the paper for bids on that.
Can we just have a shop class volunteer do it?
I don't want them to do it yet. Turn the fresh stuff, where's what the Congress says.
I guess that's what I'm wondering is what, what step, now what do we want to do now? Are we going to?
Everybody saw those plans.
I mean, well, we can get bids.
It's been long enough. Let's move.
Let's get bids. I mean, because that's, doesn't cost us anything.
How much money, how much money we got to do that?
You might have about seventy, eighty thousand.
I think that's enough.
But you have to do an amendment to the capital.
To budget.
No.
Budgetment?
No.
Capital.
Capital facilities.
Oh, capital facilities. Are we able to do that after we've done the SMP?
We'll have, yeah, someone will have to.
We can only do that once you.
I think so, isn't it?
There would be, there are ways you could do it.
Because.
Out of cycle.
Yeah, you need to include that expenditure in the capital facilities plan. So probably if we get a bid, we're going to know how much. And then before it started, if we get that, then we can do that dollar amount, say it's sixty thousand for the bid. You can do it for seventy thousand dollars for the capital facilities plan.
As long as it's in the plan, it's okay. So while we're doing that, while we're amending that plan, why don't we just put some boilerplate stuff in there that says, and maybe any other future work at the town hall or at the park or whatever? Can we do that?
I'm pretty sure they need it specified, which you're going to do.
This is not a common place. Just throw some boilerplate in there.
Does.
That's who did one for us before when we did the park structure.
Yeah, okay.
They had to include that in there. I mean, it's not as big of a deal as the comp plan update or this SMP or any of that.
Amendment, a little chunked out.
Well, that'll be number eight.
So I think that.
There's no reason for us to be here.
Maybe.
Start working right now.
Yeah, you know that once in a while, we need some stuff done. So I guess would it be? I don't know. I don't know how to, what to, what to put in to go out to bid for this project.
What to say, you mean? A small bathroom addition to the town of South Clayone Town Hall? Not addition, but a remodel?
Yes, I would say a remodel. Plant available at Town Hall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to, yeah, I don't know how, okay, I'll have to figure out how to, or when or when or the other. How did you?
Can't HLA run those for you?
Let's run what you're.
Yeah, they can.
Do they, are yours for that?
They're engineers.
Okay.
You ready for this, kid?
They probably could run the bidding for you and everything.
Yeah, and at least let me know, at least tell me what I can.
Well, yeah, I mean, they, but they can do the, I think they can do the whole process. They're pretty big firms.
Yeah. Okay.
I saw on. Nobody's, nobody heard that.
No.
Our, our wet well updates, controllers and blah, blah, blah for the lift station. It's going to go out to bid here.
Yeah.
Pretty quick.
That's what, yeah, that's what Scott said.
That whole thing was on Facebook. And included in that was something that you pressed on and this thing opened up. And there was all of, most of the projects that HLA was, is involved in and running through the whole thing on this graphic that came out and then you could look at all those individual things.
You're going to set that up first?
No.
Well, you got that, don't you?
No.
Put that on your list, number one.
Yeah.
Not even to the dangerous.
Point, how much will that cost, though?
I don't know.
Yeah. They should be able to give you a scope of work. They're on, they're your on-call engineer, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be a task added to the on-call contract?
Yeah.
And then negotiate the cost.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll do it anyway.
And that, HLA is the one who submitted that stuff to the newspaper. So there was a, on this pump store at the, or whatever, yeah, they submitted all that stuff.
I have to wind up on Facebook.
Town Prior.
Not on Facebook, well, it's on Facebook, but it's on the South Clayone thing. You Town Prior. Well, you know.
So anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, great.
Okay, I'll ask, maybe I'll contact Ben tomorrow.
Okay. Flopping house at five oh four Sixth Street, right across the road.
Yeah, that's mine also. I took pictures of it tonight. And so I'll just run that at the same time I do the junkyard, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause that seems to be getting worse.
I'll have to coordinate. I'll talk to Michelle.
Okay.
Geiger, is it Geiger, right? Yeah. Because I see she's posted something on it and I want to.
This is not to be occupied.
Yeah, I'll just coordinate with her that we're going to declare it a nuisance and ask them to remove it.
I think it should be ribboned off. I really do. Well, there was some on there, but not just around the.
Ribboned off, caution tape, fire tape.
They should have a fence around it.
Yep.
I'll try.
I got it.
So with that being said, if we're on that topic, that's commercial, right?
Yes, if it's gone.
Residential, once it's gone, there will not be another residential home put on that, correct?
That's correct, as I understand that.
Correct.
Because Jake Cranby's little house is still in the back of that lot. The little cinder block house. I don't know what's in there now, but no, once it's gone, it's gone.
So does a little house go to then?
Now, a little house can stay.
Yeah, it can stay.
It can stay.
If there's room.
But that thing's gotten shorter since the last council meeting was held. It was dark then, but I can still see it, but it's settling.
Yeah, this back, this back corner over here, closest to us is getting pretty bad and the porch over by the.
I saw the chimney thingy fell off.
Post offices getting closer and closer to that little table that was in the corner there. Because before you could actually, you could still go in there and sit and stay dry, you know? Not real sure you'd want to now.
Well, I've heard you tell me that they have seen people, people between the back of the post office and that property kind of hanging out.
Oh, I bet.
There's probably somebody.
Feel free.
Well, that place is full of whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, that's on the way. Water connection to five eleven West Side, that's Barrett's place.
Yeah, so what?
Scott turned it off.
He did.
Then turned it back on and then Scott locked it. Is it still locked?
No, they cut the lock off of the sawzall and turned it back on. So now he's got an ecology block sitting on top of the meter so that they can't get back in the meter.
Hello, they good.
But the thing is, it's like, if we were to remove that meter, they would no longer be able to get water from the town again. They're going to have to drill a well.
Yeah.
Because we don't allow any more water connections outside town.
We'll just see if they can leave the ecology block on there.
I think what I'll do is I'll call Nicole and let her know that she needs to get ahold of an attorney in Ellensburg and just tell them, this is the deal. I need to get these people out.
Oh, this is the eviction that you were talking about?
Yeah.
So they're taking water and not paying for you, so you shut them off?
Um, yeah, they weren't paying for it. And Nicole owned old, or owed like, what's she, like fifteen thou, thirteen hundred dollars?
Who's Nicole?
The owner of the property. But she's on the west side. She's like, what is she, forty? I don't know. But she.
She's not paying it either.
Yeah, she's paid everything now. She pays the taxes. She pays for all that stuff, but she can't get them out. They won't leave.
So legally, the water bill's paid. They could have water?
She just wanted it shut off.
Oh.
The owner wanted it shut off to her property.
That's probably a can of worms, isn't it? Could be.
Yeah, it's hard to tell. She's got a rental agreement. It probably is, but it's.
I'm pretty sure there's no, pretty sure there's no rental agreement. They pay rent in like five years.
Alright, so we'll just see what she wants to do then.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I'll let her know.
That's where all the homeless are hanging out. That place is disgusting and it gets worse and worse every day.
Public health.
Oh, yeah, it's gross.
It's just horrendous. Behind the house is just like loaded with garbage.
Critter's trailer moved from the park, peeped over it around, out of town, past what's her name's place there through the gate, Heflin's? And that little place up there toward where John Bounds lives up there. Lewa Modi.
Oh, yeah, right by my parents' place.
Yeah, that trailer sits right there with that little hut, that big wood pile. And they got it all straightened up. Somebody's living there. Anyway, that's Indian County. Critter. He's back in town. His rent's gone from feet. Okay. Last new business thing. I'm going to appoint a councilperson. We're done.
So they're.
There it is. I'm going to appoint Leslie Bitsworth to, to serve out Jack's term at this table.
Good.
Yeah, it'll be, well, till the twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Then she'll have to run.
Yeah, so this year.
So.
That's the gal that was here.
Yes, yeah, so as long as everybody knows that, we're going to appoint her.
Good. Please do.
I think that's a good move. She's very knowledgeable. She's very conscious of what's going on. I think she'd be a great addition.
Says down here, she is known for, I am known for my candor, authenticity and transparency.
She calls it like it is.
Is that same thing as no filter?
So anyway, that's.
She'll fit right in.
That's what we're going to do.
Good, good.
So I heard some of the alternatives.
Oh, bitch. New business? Alright, we don't need an executive session.
So we're.
When you get a chance.